Okay, so I will call the meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission to order. And for obvious reasons, this planning commission meeting is not physically open to the public. Limited staff are present in the council chambers and planning commissioners are participating remotely via video call. Members of the planning commission can use the reaction choices in Zoom to indicate they would like to speak similar to raising a hand. As always, this meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed live from the city's website with the Zoom meeting link, also available on the website. Our technician tonight is Noel Cava, and this is his inaugural effort at being technician. Public comment can be emailed or called into the planning commission. Members of the public may submit public comment once for each item by email or phone. You may not submit more than one email or call per item. To call in comments, and this will be on the screen also, is before the item you wish to comment on, call the phone number and enter the meeting ID displayed. Press the hash key when prompted for participant ID. To raise your hand to make a comment, press star nine and fine. Wait to hear that you are unmuted and then make your comment. You will have up to three minutes to speak. If you are watching the meeting via Zoom, you can use the participant option to raise your hand and make a comment when unmuted by our moderator. To email comments, identify the item you wish to comment on in your email's subject line. Emailed comments will be accepted starting now up until I announce the public comment for that item is closed. Each emailed comment will be read aloud for up to three minutes or displayed on a screen. Emails and calls received by outside of the comment period outlined will not be included in the record. And before we start the main part of the meeting, for members of the public, if you're going to have public comment or if you're going to want to have the consent calendar item at 1515 Prospect Avenue heard as a public hearing, it would be good if you could go ahead now while we're doing some other items to either email or call in for those. So next, we'll do the roll call. And I'll go through this. Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Commissioner Wilk?
Here.
Commissioner Christensen?
Here.
Commissioner Ruth?
Here.
And Chair is obviously here. Now the pledge of allegiance. Do we have a flag someplace online? No, I guess not. Okay, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And.
For which we stand.
One nation.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, visible, liberty and justice.
Oh, okay. Next is oral communications, and the first subpart of that is additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any?
No additions or deletions to agenda this evening.
Okay, then next is public comment, which is what I just mentioned previously. That's an opportunity for anyone in the public to comment on an item that is not on the agenda.
We.
And, yes?
We do have public comment. Ed Botorff, Councilmember Botorff is on the line.
Okay, and other, before we get Councilman Botorff, other people can continue to submit their requests while he's addressing us. So, Mr. Botorff, are you with us?
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I thank you for this chance to speak. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner TJ Welch for eight years of community service. I selected him eight years ago because he was a dedicated person to the community of Capitola. I think he's served the community well. He started off eight years ago finishing up on the general plan and has worked on many projects over the eight-year period, finally ending up with another big job on the.
Enter your meeting ID, followed by.
Coastal Commission Plan. I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of things about TJ. Why I think he was a good person to be a planning commissioner. I think you all know he has a tremendous love for the community. And what I really admire is that I believe he was the voice for the represented homeowners' rights and always stood up to a project that he felt benefited the community, was fair to the homeowner. And I want to thank him for eight years of service, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just add to that that four years ago, Commissioner Welch tried to escape from the job and was not going to continue his second term. And I don't know whether you or whoever convinced him to stay with us, and we're very glad of that. So I will second the Mr. Botorff's comments about the service that, the great service that has been provided by Commissioner Welch over the last eight years. Any other public comments? No one having sent anything in over the period of time that we've allowed. We will move on to commission comments. Comment, Commissioner Wilk?
Yes, please. So I would also like to thank Commissioner Welch for his service. I've learned a lot from him in my two years on the commission. His reasonable voice and wisdom will be sorely missed, and I wish him all the best in his new endeavors and thank him for his service. And then I have a silly, a sillier issue. I don't know if silly, but I noticed that on the application, and on many applications, there's always the Ark and Site Committee comments. And inevitably, on the Ark and Site Committee comments, there's someone, either Danielle or Kalish says, "Hey, you need to have a drainage site plan." For whatever reason, it's always, you always have to wait until you get to Ark and Site before you realize, "Hey, I need a drainage site plan." It occurred to me that that happens so often that maybe there's a better way to communicate that, like earlier in the process. So I mentioned that to Katie, and she's staff, and they said, yeah, that maybe there's an opportunity to get the word out a little bit early, perhaps on the application. So I'd just like to kind of give that action item to staff, put that in the record so that at least they'll take a look at it and see if there's a way we can, we can get the word out a little earlier on the drainage site plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, any other commissioners have any comments to make at this time? Any staff comments?
Yes, I too wanted to give my thanks to Commissioner Welch for his time on the planning commission. I can think back to eight years ago, or about seven and a half years ago, when I was applying for the planning, for the job here in Capitola and watching planning commission videos and to study what was going on in town. And I remember seeing Commissioner Welch during those hearings when I was. And since that time, I think that TJ has always done an incredible job of representing the city as well as having an understanding of the individual applicants that come through and has always looked at all projects fairly, and I really appreciate his eight years here at the city working as a planning commissioner and look forward to him participating on matters as a resident in the future. So thank you for your time, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you.
Okay, so that will take us to the consent calendar. There is one item. Oh, thank you. Approval of the minutes, I skipped. So we have minutes for August, September, and November, and I'm not sure why we skipped October, but there must be a reason. And so I guess, do we have any additions or corrections to the, we'll take them as a group, the three sets of minutes?
Chairman Newman, I will have to abstain from the August minutes. I was not in attendance for that one.
Okay. And are there any other commissioners that did not participate in any of the three hearings?
Yeah, Commissioner Christensen here. I didn't participate in, I think it was the July minutes.
Okay, well, this is August, September, and November.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You good with those?
Yes, I believe.
I think Commissioner Christensen was also absent the August minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, August. I apologize. That was, I read it wrong.
Well, good. Let's do August separately, and then we'll do September and November after that. Do we have a motion among those who can vote on the August minutes to approve?
I'd move approval for the August minutes.
And do we have? Okay, we'll have a roll call. Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilk?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, so those minutes are approved. Now we'll take September and November together. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve September and November.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilk?
Aye.
Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, so that takes.
Aye.
Twice. So that takes care of the minutes. And now back to where I was on the consent calendar. This has given the public more time. Has anyone from the public indicated they want the 1515 Prospect Avenue design permit application to be pulled for a public hearing?
There's no public.
Staff, any response from the public in that regard?
Good evening, Chair Newman. I haven't had any public comments by email.
Okay.
And there's no.
And do any of the commissioners care to have that item heard as a regular hearing? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Anyone cares to make it?
I move approval of 1515 Prospect Avenue.
Okay, just for those listening in who might not have the agenda in front of them, this is a design permit for first and second-story additions to a non-conforming single-family residence, a new detached accessory dwelling unit, and a revocable encroachment permit for a wall in the public right of way. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote. Oh, did we get a second?
All second.
Okay. Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilk?
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen? Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen, are you, did we lose you? Apparently we did. Well, we still have a, the Chair votes aye, so it'll be four votes aye and one, I don't know if it's an abstention or a absence, temporary absence.
Commissioner Christensen is logging back on.
She's back, she's back on now.
Oh. Commissioner Christensen, your vote on the consent item?
And she needs to connect to.
Are you muted? Are you muted?
I'm mute, I'm here, I'm sorry. Technical difficulties, apology.
Okay.
I vote aye for.
Okay, good. That'll be unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to the public hearings. We have two public hearings, and the second one, Vice Chair Ruth will take over. But the first one is 2110 41st Avenue. This is an application for a design permit and conditional use permit amendment to modify the site layout and building design and add two new canopies with vacuum drops at Master Car Wash, a car washing facility located within the regional commercial zoning district. So, staff report, please.
All right, thank you, Chair Newman. Sean, you can go ahead and take me to the next slide, please. So 2110 41st Avenue is located on the east side of 41st Avenue between Mattress Firm and Kentucky Fried Chicken. The 25,090 square foot lot is in Capitola's main commercial corridor along 41st Avenue. Current site design approved under a conditional use permit number 06050 includes a one-story main building attached to a car wash tunnel and a large trellis with vacuum drops, as shown here. Next slide, please. So here's the existing site plan. Under the current business model, the business offers both exterior-only and full-service vehicle cleaning services. There's the trellis with the vacuum drops shown in red, the vacuum equipment shed in green at the bottom, the detail room in yellow, car wash tunnel in blue, and there's some water recycling tanks in orange along the north lot line there. Next slide, please. So here's the proposed site plan, option A. The applicant is proposing to change to a do-it-yourself Flex Express business model in which customers pay for services at a self-service kiosk, stay in their cars throughout, through the car wash tunnel, and then have the option of utilizing vacuum drops and other cleaning materials to detail the inside and outside of the vehicle in the two red areas here. The proposed site plan includes a reduction in the size of the main building, the addition of two new freestanding canopies with solar panels, and 12 vacuum drops, two new self-service kiosks, and a new drive-through lane that circles the southeast and north perimeter of the lot and leads to the car wash tunnel. The, as I mentioned, the vacuum canopies here are in red, the two new self-service pay kiosks are in yellow. The green arrows here indicate the new driveway along the south lot line, and then the recycling tanks in the car wash tunnel stay the same. Next slide, please. These are just a few renderings of the option A plan with the canopies with the solar panels. Next slide, please. So here's proposed site plan, option B. The plan that also includes this alternative site design that does not have the freestanding canopies with solar panels. This one actually instead has individual freestanding vacuum stations at each parking space. The owner has indicated that they prefer option A with the canopies, but with current construction costs and limited supply of goods, would like to have an alternative design approved as well. In order to accommodate this, staff added a condition of approval regarding the design options to ensure that the alternative, which is not constructed, expires upon the issuance of the building permit. You can see all those little freestanding vacuum stations here in red, the same areas that would be under the canopies in the other option. Next slide, please. So this is the renderings with the freestanding vacuum stations. They have this sort of little blue arm that extends out from them that you can see here in the upper right image. Next slide, please. These are the proposed rear, front, and side elevations. The north side really isn't visible because it's closer to the lot line and it's not visible to the general public. This is an image of option A that has the canopies. Next slide, please. Here's the proposed floor plan. As I mentioned, the blue area of the car wash tunnel is going to stay the same. The lobby area has been reduced a bit in size to accommodate these parking spaces up against the building with vacuum stations and then also the employee parking, which I'll cover later. And then this green area is the mechanical room. The, it already housed the mechanical equipment for the car wash tunnel, but now they're also going to be including the mechanical equipment for the vacuum, the vacuum drops in this main building as well, rather than in the outbuilding where it was located previously, which will help with the noise. Next slide, please. So in terms of parking, the zoning code does not have a specific parking requirement for a car wash use. The original conditional use permit required eight onsite employee parking spaces. The current parking is out of compliance because they only have three onsite parking spaces. However, under the current proposal, it includes eight onsite employee parking spaces that were required under the previous conditional use permit, and those spaces are shown here in blue. So since the new management plan requires less employees, additional parking was not required. Next slide, please. Next slide, thanks. So there's one new aspect here. The new zoning code contains residential transition standards to protect residential parcels that are adjacent to commercial parcels from potential negative impacts of commercial land uses. And this is the first project since the adoption of that code to require compliance with those standards. So in case you're wondering why I went through those one by one in such depth in the staff report, that was why we wanted to make sure you were getting familiar with these new standards. The project as originally proposed complied with the standards for setbacks, daylight planes, and loading, but not the landscaping standards. I commented on that at the meeting and after the Ark and Site review meeting, the applicant revised the plans to provide a 10-foot strip of landscaped planting area with a tree screen along the rear lot line that is adjacent to several residential properties, except in the area where the existing car wash lane is located, because that part of the existing site design is not changing. So the design before you tonight complies with the residential transition standards. Next slide, please. The applicant is also proposing a new monument sign along 41st Avenue, which is shown here. The proposed monument sign is seven feet, six inches tall with a sign area of 33 square feet and a two-foot-tall ledgestone veneer base. The proposed sign complies with all of the design standards for monument signs. Next slide, please. The conditional use permit is required for land uses that are generally appropriate within a zoning district but potentially undesirable on a particular parcel. Conditional use permit is a discretionary action that enables the city to ensure that a proposed use is consistent with the general plan will not create negative impacts to adjacent properties or to the general public. The planning commission is allowed to attach conditions of approval to a conditional use permit to achieve consistency with the general plan, local coastal program, and/or zoning code. When evaluating coastal, sorry, conditional use permit, the planning commission must consider several characteristics of the proposed use, including those listed here. These considerations are analyzed in depth in the staff report, and with the inclusion of a condition of approval requiring a new masonry wall along the rear property line, which I'll cover in the next slide, the proposed project is consistent with the general plan and will not create negative impacts to adjacent properties or the general public. Next slide, please. So currently, there's a retaining wall that runs along the rear of the property, which is shown here with the yellow line. Because the adjacent residential properties on Derby Avenue are at a much lower grade than the subject parcel, the retaining wall is topped with an older wood fence, shown here in the two photos on the right. The applicant is proposing to install a new six-foot-tall wood fence on top of the existing retaining wall as part of the proposed project. However, in order to mitigate potential negative noise impact from the car wash use and to address past noise complaints from the adjacent residential properties, staff included condition of approval number 19, which requires a six-foot-tall solid masonry wall along the rear property line between the subject property and the adjacent residential development. Solid masonry wall is actually a requirement in the CN zone between commercial properties and adjacent residential development, so this requirement, we don't feel it's unprecedented. Also to ensure that the existing masonry wall is adequate and safe for the continued surcharge of vehicles and the additional masonry wall, the building officials requiring an engineering analysis and potentially a soils report as well prior to issuance of a building permit. Next slide, please. So that, staff recommends the planning commission review and approve the project based on the conditions of approval and findings.
Thank you. Excellent analysis by the staff.
Thank you. We, we worked a lot with the applicants on this and moved very quickly, actually, so.
Do we have any questions of the staff before we go to the public hearing?
I have questions.
Please.
This is Commissioner Wilk. So, sorry I didn't get to these questions, but they just occurred to me during the presentation. So you mentioned that the, you mentioned that he has two options that he's proposing, or the applicant is, and you want the second option, whichever one he doesn't choose, to expire upon issuance of the building permit. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the way it's worded.
So I was wondering if that's a little too soon in the sense that he, you know, perhaps during the early stages of the building, he may want to switch to the other option. And I was wondering why, why that would expire so soon? Should there maybe, maybe put a, well, could you please explain why you had the expiration date at all on there?
Um, I'm trying to think back of why we.
Why did you expire one option?
I'm trying to remember the conversation with Katie on this. I'm not, I'm blanking on why we wanted to expire.
I can chime in.
Yeah.
I think simply because there are two designs that are, they're asking for two designs to be approved. It seemed like upon issuance of a building permit, at that point, they've made a substantial investment in a building permit, and they've gone through all their drawing stages. We could, I know the applicant's architect is here. If they would like that modified to extend later, it just, that's the point where they've really made a substantial investment. They've probably done all their homework on what, what materials are available and timing and cost, because it does cost money to go through the building permit stage. And so that's what we thought was the reasonable time in which to expire the other design approved under this permit. But we can also, I do see their architect, Bill Kempf, is here, and when you go to public comment, you may want to see if they feel okay with that condition or if the timing should be changed.
We can address that when we get into the commission discussion. That's a good point, great, thank you.
So let me, let me ask my other questions then in the meantime. And that is, my other two questions involve the retaining wall and the fact that the neighboring houses are so far below. They're basically a mountainside down below this property, at least it seems that way. And so I was wondering if the tree screen requirement, the landscape requirement that is, you know, between business and residential is, is necessary in light of that? Because it's not like they're going to experience the noise directly because it's going to like, they basically be shooting over their house tops if there's any noise. And the same with the view shed. It's not like they're going to be staring at a car wash. They're basically staring at the retaining wall, and the trees are just going to probably just block more of their afternoon sunlight. So I'm wondering if the tree screen is something you considered waiving?
I did think a lot about that, because really, like I said, the wall's not actually a requirement, but the trees are, and the wall seemed to actually address a lot, mitigate the noise concerns a lot more. But first of all, we as staff don't have the ability to waive those requirements. So, you know, that's just not within our power to waive that.
Okay, and then the third question involves the wall versus the fence. The fence is there now. I can see that maybe a wall would be required just in case there was some hard-to-control car that you want careening down in the neighborhood. But again, from a, I don't know if that's the purpose of requiring a wall, but again, because of the vertical distance between the two properties, I would think a wall, it doesn't add any benefit in terms of privacy or noise abatement. And I'm wondering if that requirement is all that necessary? Could you explain maybe why that's in there?
That was just, it was similar to a requirement in the CN zone, as I mentioned in the presentation, and that was just a staff addition as a mitigation measure. If the planning commission does not feel that is appropriate, you are welcome to change that. Like I said, they did propose a six-foot-tall wood fence on there, and if you think that's adequate, then we can remove that condition.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
And maybe we'll, we'll hear from the applicant on those issues. So any other commissioners? If not, we'll open the public hearing, and I know Mr. Kempf is available and probably would like to address us. So, and I don't know if anyone else from the applicant also.
We do have, EA is listed as, from the public, is wanting to speak. And is it okay if I allow her in to talk?
Well, let's do the applicant first.
Okay.
I mean, she can listen in, obviously.
Yeah, we'll go there, we'll go to her second, so we'll bring in the.
Yeah, so, Mr. Kempf, are you with us?
There we go.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you to Matt for all his help in getting us this far. We've reviewed the conditions of approval, and I, I can't speak for David. We didn't connect today, but, but we didn't, I didn't see anything in there that was overly onerous. The, the only thing I would like to talk about is this rear wall issue. And I believe one of the commissioners brought up some of the, some of the issues that I've been thinking about, and I'm just wondering if the neighbors below would really want to look up at what, what would basically become a 12-foot-tall masonry wall in their backyard. I was more in favor of having the wood six-foot wall on top of the retaining wall because it seemed to soften things quite a bit. So that, that was kind of my thinking there. The other question about. The other question about having to require a soils report for a wall that's already there, I thought that was, that was an expensive condition for the project. So I'm not sure that, I could understand where if we were re-engineering that wall, where a soils report would be needed. But if the wall is found to be sound, I'd like to remove the requirement for a soils report.
What about the alternative A and alternative B options?
Well, I, so I'm trying to figure out how this is gonna go forward. We are definitely talking about submitting with the plans for the solar system. And so once we submit with the solar system, the solar array, canopies, we will be getting to a point where that design would be cost, would be bid by the contractors. And we would get a sense of where that's going and whether that's gonna be affordable for the owner. But I definitely think that there could be a point pretty close to permit issuance where there may be a discussion about changing to the less expensive alternative of just having the vacuum drops. So I'm not really sure what I would modify in the wording.
So Mike, this is Commissioner Wilk, if I can interrupt. Chair?
Yes.
So my thought was that between the, I think there's like, you've got six months between the building permit before you actually have to start activity. And my thought was that perhaps you get the building permit in anticipation of starting work. And for, due to COVID or whatever, there's a delay, and then that delay, expenses might change. Who knows what might happen? You might say, dang it, I need to go to the other option. And I just hate to unnecessarily tie your hands for no reason. That's all.
Yeah, I agree. Well, we'll talk about that when we get to the discussion. I think that's a good point. Any other questions of Mr. Kempf? I have a couple. One is, is this concept, this car wash concept existent in Santa Cruz, to your knowledge?
This concept is very similar to changes that were made up the street at the Cruz Car Wash, where the customer actually stays in the car through the car wash. But at Cruz Car Wash, I believe they have staff that does the vacuuming afterwards. This is supposed to be a more user-friendly, self-service kind of operation, where the car owner would actually do their own cleaning of the interior.
Well, I use one in Scottsdale that is this concept, and I think it's great. I think it's a really modern approach to car washing, because, and we don't need so many parking, because there really aren't many employees involved in the operation.
Well, we agree. We felt the employee parking requirement was a little onerous, and we would love to get a couple more parking spaces in there, but we were just trying to stick with the existing cruelest.
Then, the sign, I had a question about the sign, because it has a car with a surfboard on the top. And which I don't think will go through your car wash. And what are you gonna do when the first person tries to drive through with a surfboard on the top of their car?
I would let David speak to that, but I hope he has good insurance.
Okay, any other questions of Mr. Kempf? Do we have any other? Oh, there is one public person, and is anyone else from the developer, from the owner's standpoint? Applicant. If not, take the public member. Are you with us?
Yes, so this public member has written an email, as well as is here with their hand up. So I'm gonna allow her to talk, and she can decide whether or not she wants to read her email out loud or just speak to the planning commission.
Okay.
Eya?
What is your name?
And, Eya, I believe you're on mute. There we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes. Say your name, please.
Hello?
Can you give us your name, please? We can hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, but you can't hear us, apparently.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello?
Katie, can you speak to her? I can't.
Hello?
Eya, we can hear you.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello?
Eya, we can hear you.
Oh, I thought you just clicked on it. You should be able to hear it.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Well, I think we get to just the premise.
Yeah.
No, I can't hear it at all.
I guess we'll have to read the email.
We can start with the email and then come back.
Do you have the email, Katie?
Yeah, I'm opening the email. Let me see if I can share the screen. You know, I'm afraid to share the screen right now, because she's dialing in to the instructions that are on the page right now, so I'm just gonna give her a moment.
Followed by pound.
Oh, boy.
Okay. Let's see.
Okay. All right, we have the email that we can now see. Does everyone have that?
Yes.
Yeah, can you hear us?
Just, just for, I just want to hear them.
Eya, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you. But you can't hear us.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So my name is Eya Walton. We live behind the car wash. I wanted to comment about what Mr. Wilk said. The noise is excessive already back here. The noise is also excessive across Derby. As you mentioned, that the noise kind of goes over us. It drops right into our yard, but it also goes to the houses across the street. The, I do agree, or we do agree, that an additional mason wall on top of the already existing over twelve-foot wall, which is there, would not be an appealing thing. However, the current fence has gaps between it. We've always had an issue for eight years of privacy, because people can look directly over, which they do. They throw towels over there, food is thrown over the fence, a number of different issues. Our children often report water coming over into the yard from the car wash. And then we did send an email, because we didn't know if we'd be able to get to comment about these issues. And also the retaining wall, about the soil report, you know, the reinforcement bar was put in nineteen eighty-nine, and it was only guaranteed for twenty-five years, which were passed. And we have had issues for eight years of water seeping out of the wall, not down the wall from the car wash, but out of the wall, and issues with cracks. And it is, we were told eight years ago by Daniel, the inspector at Capitola, that it was out of code, eight years ago. So obviously, we have grave concerns about the wall. Now, they did, they looked at the wall for a long time. It was done in a very haphazard way, with inspection, never with an engineer. So I'm hoping that, I'm very glad to hear in this that there will be an engineer's report. But I would really like to also see the soils report. Or, you know, it's catastrophic if that wall doesn't, doesn't hold.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Mr. Kempf, do you care to respond at all? You're muted, Mr. Kempf.
Well, we, I'm not, I've never been to the other side of the wall, so I guess it would be something that we should definitely look at from a safety standpoint. And I can definitely discuss it with my client, the owner, and we can get an analysis done. I'm not sure, but he had said that there has been some investigations done since he's owned the car wash, but I'm not familiar with those and can't speak to them. But I wouldn't have an issue with there being some kind of condition that would require it to be deemed safe.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I will close the public hearing. And it seems like we have a few issues for the commissioners to discuss. Who would like to start?
I'll start. Sorry, Peter, can I interject for one sec before you start? Sorry, this is associate planner Orbach. I just wanted to give an answer really quick about that soils report. So I did discuss this with the building official prior to sending out the packet, and she preferred that that requirement be in there, not necessarily because she wants to use it or thinks she will need to use it, but just so that she can and already has that pre-authorization to use it, should she need to. So I think it would really hinge on what the engineering report uncovers, as to, you know, whether she would use that or not. So that's why she preferred to have that in there.
What does the condition say? That there will be a soils report, or that the building official has the right to require one?
It says, "Prior to building permit issuance, property owners shall provide an engineering analysis and a soils report for retaining wall along the rear property line to ensure that the wall can continue to support the surcharge of vehicles adjacent to the rear lot line and the six-foot-tall masonry wall on the top of the retaining wall."
That's different from what you just said. That's an absolute requirement. Maybe we can change that, but we'll talk about it.
Yeah, she, there's a lot of sort of border plate, things in here that read like that, that she doesn't always require. A lot of times when we do the elevation certificates and no-rise studies, you know, she has the power to not require that if she doesn't think it's necessary, so.
Well, let me just suggest, then, when you write the conditions, if they're not absolute requirements, but they're a matter of the building department's discretion, that that's what you say.
It did originally say possibly, and then that question came up about whether it's say possibly or make it a requirement, and she said we should make it a requirement. So I'm happy to put possibly back in there if that would solve this problem.
Okay, I'll get back to the commissioners then. Commissioner Wilk, you wanted to lead off?
Okay, yeah, so I appreciate the neighbor chiming in on this, because the wall, retaining wall safety was not an issue that occurred to me. Although when I, when I looked over the fence into their backyard, I'm sorry to, I can see how easily people can do that. I did, you know, I saw a huge drop-off, and if that wall goes, that is, that's a disaster. So the engineering report is absolutely critical for the safety of the neighbors. So I appreciate that comment, and I, and I'm looking forward to this engineering report being sounded, because otherwise, I'm not sure what's gonna happen. So it, soils report should be optional, based on the engineering report. And before I forget, I'd like to thank the applicant for investing in Capitola. I appreciate the investment in our city. But, yeah, with regards to my other comments, I would recommend that we just eliminate the option expiration, or perhaps put six months on it, just to avoid any potential heartburn to the applicant. Not that he'll necessarily need our help, but why burden him unnecessarily? And then with regards to the general retaining wall versus the fence, I agree with the neighbor who would prefer a fence, but not a, but not a slotted fence, which is currently, it's more of a picket fence that you can see through. So a solid wood fence, I think, would be preferable to the wall. And I would like to, I would like to propose that we go in that direction as opposed to the further retaining wall. And then finally, with regards to this tree screen, I guess if the applicant's okay with it, more green, if you send to me, that I would entertain also maybe eliminating. But I'm willing, willing to hear others' comments before I make a motion. Thank you.
Hey, who else? Commissioner Ruth, any thoughts?
Yeah, I think staff addressed all the potential problems that could occur out here, especially with the wall and the soils report and engineering requirement. I can go along with making the soils report optional, depending on what the engineer's report states. And, you know, I can go along with a solid fence, too.
Okay, Commissioner Christensen?
Yeah, I just had a, I agree with Commissioner Wilk and Commissioner Ruth's comments about the soils report and the engineering. But the, what the neighbor was saying concerned me a bit with the, just the availability of the public being able to access, you know, and view her backyard. I think that the tree screen is pretty important. Just having any type of buffer from the public to actually see through, not just a solid fence, but something to actually push them off the fence, so they can't just throw towels or throw something or just look over. I think considering the residential area around Forty First Avenue is pretty important. So I would say if anything, you know, having, emphasizing the tree screen would be pretty important in my mind, but just a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Welch?
So as far as the solid masonry wall, I'm benevolent. I could go either way on that. I think a solid wall fence from the neighbor's perspective makes sense. As far as the visual aspect, the, you know, the only thing I think of, and I don't, maybe it's mismanagement coming back, but is, you know, all the people driving through on their own around that area, the wood fence wouldn't help much to help stop a vehicle should it go. Not make that term, but the masonry wall seems like it would help. But I could go either way. I think the tree screening would add a little bit to that, maybe from the sound. So, you know, I, you know, what, I'm just gonna, I could go with the staff on how they want to perceive that. I would hope that Mr. Carson would maybe look at, you know, working with the homeowners in the back to come to some type of consensus on what they do with that. You know, I think maybe an issue in reading the email and listening is fewer employees there. The music probably won't be an issue, and maybe the employees working won't be an issue. So having said that, I think overall, the project is something that I can support. I hate to see the full service go away, quite honestly. Again, and I hope, you know, I hope it works out well for them. I look at the backing out of those slots with not the workers, but just the people who come there to get their cars cleaned, in and out, backing out. It just, it looks like it's gonna be a little bit congested. It could be a problem. But overall, I think the project's good, and I could support it.
Okay, so we've got a lot of deep... Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Christensen. You want to add something?
I just had a quick question for the applicant, if, or for staff. Is there going to be any, you know, supervision? I mean, how many, I don't know if I picked up if there was gonna be any supervision on-site, even though it was self-serve.
It said, in the business management plan, it said minimum three, maximum five, I believe. So on the busiest weekends, they would have five people working.
Okay, so there's somebody monitoring, you know, what people are doing on site.
Okay, so just to hit some of the details here, and more wording than anything else. I think on the, on the two alternatives, I don't see any reason why we can't change that condition to read that the alternative that isn't built expires when there's a final inspection.
That's exactly what I wrote down, Chair Newman. But I changed condition seventeen on my paper here to at project final of a building permit, and then the rest reads the same. So basically, it puts it off from building permit issuance... So basically, it puts it off from building permit issuance to building permit final.
That, that accomplishes the city's objectives. I'm glad you can read my mind too. Then, um, I do think that the wording on the soils report needs to be cleaned up a little bit. I think it should read that the soils report is required if, if in the discretion of the building official, it's, it's necessary. If that's okay with other people. The trees seem like a good idea. I didn't hear the neighbor objecting to having trees blocking their sun. So the trees seem to be a good idea. And a solid wood fence seems to be, to me, to be the best, uh, compromise of the various issues in the back there. But, uh, I'll see where the motion goes on that. And just in response to Commissioner Welch, I'm, I'm on the other side of this. I'm happy to see this, uh, semi, uh, full-service kind of car wash. Having used one very successfully, I think they're really a, um, a good option. Better than the ones where you just, where you don't drive through and you go in and clean your car. So you drive through, clean your car, and then you come out and vacuum it if you want. Anyway, that is a personal preference. So you think further or do we wanna start trying to motion?
I'll try a motion.
Okay.
So I might need help on this because I don't have the, the paperwork in front of me. But basically, I'd like to approve the staff's, I move that we approve the staff's recommendation with the following three modifications. First, to modify the building, uh, the option expiration to the final permit as opposed to the initial building permit. Second, to allow for a solid wood fence in addition to the option of a wall. And third, to make the soils report optional depending upon results of the engineering report.
In the discretion of the building official?
And in the discretion of the building official.
Okay.
One second.
All right, and do we have any further discussion? If not, we'll go right to the roll call. Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
By hearing some chatter.
Commissioner Christensen has her hand up?
Oh, no, that was, that was from before.
Okay, now, okay, well, now that you've, uh, put your hand up, you can vote.
Oh, aye, aye, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilk?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye too, so that's unanimous. And, uh, we'll move on to the next item, which, um, Commissioner Ruth is gonna handle because I am recused and Commissioner Wilk is recused due to proximity of properties. And then I will come back for items six, seven, and eight to why I wrap this up.
Okay, thank Chairman Newman.
Commissioner Ruth?
Oh, yeah, this is, uh, public hearing B. It's a consideration for a coastal development permit for the installation of anchors for fifteen removable bollards, which are security barriers at three intersections within Capitola Village. Capitola Avenue and Stockton Avenue, the Esplanade and Monterey Avenue, and Monterey Avenue and Park Place. Staff?
Thank you, Vice Chair Ruth. Sean, next slide please. Uh, on September eleventh, twenty twenty, the city was awarded a grant from the California Office of Emergency Services for removable bollards to improve pedestrians' safety during special events. Uh, the grant is intended to be used to provide critical infrastructure security, protect from all threats and hazards, enhance community preparedness, prevent violent extremism, and promote inter-jurisdictional collaboration. Uh, as we all know, the Capitola Village hosts several large special events each year, such as the Capitola Public Safety Car Show, annual Wharf to Wharf Race, and Capitola Art and Wine Festival, which provide a venue for large crowds, for which the Capitola Police Department is tasked with providing security and safe access. Uh, the current method used to section off the village during those special events makes use of manned heavy concrete or plastic jersey barriers. Next slide please. The city of Capitola is proposing to install fifteen removable security barriers or bollards at the three priority intersections in the Capitola Village. Those intersections, as you mentioned, are Esplanade and Stockton Avenue, Capitola Avenue and Stockton Avenue, and Monterey Avenue and Park Place. The streets at each of the intersection locations are approximately twenty-five feet wide and will each require five removable bollards. Next slide please. The proposed project will install anchors for removable pipe and concrete bollards. An example of that is shown here. Bollards are designed to provide enhanced protection while at the same time allowing access to pedestrians and preventing the need to have barriers permanently staffed during the events. Next slide please. Capitola's local coastal plan requires the issuance of a coastal development permit for the installation of the bollards because it does not qualify for any of the exemptions under the Capitola Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point four six. Uh, bollards provide both a visual, visual deterrents and physical means of preventing vehicular traffic from entering the special event area. The proposed project creates a safer means for the public to access the coast and recreational opportunities in Capitola Village during special events and is consistent with the purpose of the local coastal plan. The proposed project complies with the required findings of the coastal development permit as shown in the staff report.
Matt, can I interrupt you for one second, please?
Yeah, that's it, so.
On, on that slide, it says Park Avenue. Just to clarify for anybody that's watching this, it's not Park Avenue, it's Park Place.
Oh, Park Place, sorry. Thank you for the correction. Uh, so with that, staff recommends, sorry, next slide please. Um, staff recommends the planning commission approve, review and approve the project based on the conditions of approval and findings. And, uh, I believe we do have Public Works representative Kalash Mazunder, uh, on the line as well, who can, um, answer questions as the project applicant for the city.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Are there any questions from, uh, the planning commission? Hearing none, then, uh, you said the building official is ready to speak?
Uh, I believe Kalash Mazunder should be on the line.
Okay, Kalash, are you there?
Sorry, Sean, Assistant Planner Sosanto or Committee Development Director Hurley, he should be able to see if, um,
Kalash is.
He's on there and available to speak.
Kalash is now a panelist. He will need to unmute. Unmute his.
Um, this is Assistant Planner Sean. I see Kalash is online, but he's muted.
There we go.
There we go.
Kalash, can you hear us? You have to undo your mute button.
He's now unmuted. He can hear us.
Oh, he can hear us.
But we can't hear him, maybe.
Can you undo your mute button? Oh, he's on his phone. A lot of technical difficulties this evening.
He's, he's not muted anymore.
He said he's on his phone.
I have a, I have a quick question there, Commissioner Ruth. While they're trying to get that on board about the bollards, I thought maybe Kalash would, would know, and I, maybe, um, Sean knows. The bollards themselves that are in place, when, uh, when they're not in place and they just have the metal cover, how are those metal covers secured, uh, in the road? Do you know?
All right, I don't know the answer to that one.
Yeah.
I'll wait for Kalash.
Yeah, there was just a message, he was questioning how to unmute himself on his phone.
I think that original thing said it's like pound nine, star nine, or, oh, there we go. Oh, we have to unmute him?
Should be unmuted.
Kalash, are you there? Well, maybe we could move forward. Is there any, Commissioner, that had any questions for Kalash regarding these bollards? I think this is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I just had the one question for, uh, the way those metal plates are secured in the ground is, could be a busy, uh, some of the streets get pretty busy with some low vehicles that I just want, you know, I, I'm sure that these are a number of areas that they're secured to the ground. I was just curious how that was. So that was my only concern. Other than that, I agree, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? Any further discussion?
If, if I may, Kalash, uh, sent a message saying bollards will have caps. Let me see. Bollards will have caps that lock so that they don't rattle and create hazard. So they will be capped and locked.
Uh, I, I saw the, I saw the cap. I'm just curious, curious how they set in there so they didn't get ran over and pop up in the air. But, uh, I'm, I'm okay with that, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second. I think it's.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. Uh, let's have the roll call, please. Commissioner Wilk's?
He's recused.
Recused.
Oh, he's recused. Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, that motion carries, and that brings us to the next item on the agenda. And Mr. Newman, we welcome you back.
Thank you, good job. Uh, director's report.
Yes, uh, thank you, commissioners. I have a few things to report this evening. First, I wanted to follow up on a few code enforcement issues that have been ongoing. At Mattress Firm, um, they have come into compliance there. We did have, uh, a couple different fines that went out to Mattress Firm. And a, a large blow-up sign was placed on their rooftop at one point. At that point, um, they, I think the local manager called more of a regional manager, and he was extremely helpful. Uh, I think he drove down to Capitola that day to remove the blimp that was on top of the building and assured us that it won't be happening anymore. We had, um, Planner Orbach drove by over the weekend, over the holiday weekend, and did not see the signs go up over the holidays. So that was good, they had taken them down the Wednesday prior. So we're hoping to have continued compliance there now with the fact that the regional manager is now involved. And across the street at four oh one Capitola Avenue, you may recall, we issued a conditional use permit for a to-go, um, to-go food establishment, food and drink. And they were issued their third red tag, um, recently for making improvements that were not following their building plans. Uh, underneath the, within the Capitola Municipal Code, when a, a permit deed is not following their approval, the city can issue, um, we can put them on notice of bringing them back to hearing. And, um, I, I sent out a letter with a correction with a deadline. And if that deadline was, if they didn't meet the deadline in terms of correction, it'll be coming back to the planning commission. I did notice, but prior to the meeting, they took out the improvements that were in the ground, that were going outside of their property line and, and if, 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 it wasn't designed or approved in their permit. And then also the trash enclosure area, um, they built a more substantial structure than just the simple screening that was allowed by the planning commission. So that is in the process of being removed. So if all of those improvements are not, if they don't meet the deadline, that will be coming back to the planning commission. But at this point, it looks like they're moving towards compliance. So those are the two updates on code enforcement that I wanted to provide you with. I also wanted to let you know that today, I'm not sure if you saw it during the noon hour, Governor, Governor Newsom's update, um, that a regional stay-at-home order was put in place for any of the regions. There's defined regions under the new order. If, if any of the regions have less than fifteen percent ICU availability, it prohibits, we'd move into the stay-at-home order prohibiting private gatherings of any sizes, closing sector operations except for critical infrastructure and retail, and requires a hundred percent masking and physical distancing and all, for all others. If we were to go be up below this fifteen percent, um, that it would be in effect for a minimum of three weeks. And then at that point, each week, they reanalyze, um, which regions can come out of that, out of that stay-at-home order. So it is based on a quantitative data. And they did update the governor's webpage this afternoon to show where the different regions are in terms of their ICU occupancy. We are tied in with the Bay Area. And luckily, we have the most capacity for our ICUs right now. I think we're at about twenty-five percent. And other areas of the state are not as fortunate to be, to have as much capacity. We're tied into San Francisco, the whole Bay Area, Marin County. And, um, so we'll be, there, there's great information on the governor's website. And that, again, I just wanna say thanks again to Commissioner Welch for all of his time with the planning commission. And it's been a pleasure, and that concludes my director's report. Thank you.
Any commission comm, communications at this point?
I guess, uh, since this is, uh, my last meeting after eight years, I'd like to just say thanks to, uh, Councilmember Bodor for, uh, appointing me and not micromanaging. Doesn't mean I didn't ever get chastised for my perspective from him, but that's okay. That's what it's about. He never, uh, actually, he never really discussed, uh, a position that he thought I should take or that he had about anything. So, uh, it's nice to have the freedom to do your job and, uh, to the best of you can. So I appreciate that. Then I wanna thank my fellow commissioners. You know, I've learned a lot over the number of years. There's, there's a lot of wisdom in the groups that come in and out of here. I've seen a few over the years, and I appreciate, uh, your help through the process. And thanks to the staff, Katie and Matt and Sean. You know, the, as my colleagues know, when people know you're a planning commissioner, you get, uh, a lot of interesting knocks on the door, phone calls, texts, emails, and, uh, people with concerns about their projects, either, or any project, whether it's positive or negative. So, uh, that in turn gets pushed down to, uh, the city staff. So I appreciate your diligence to work with me through those things. It, you know, as, uh, Councilmember Bodor mentioned, it was eight years ago. It started with the general pan, plan, and then we moved in with the zoning code. And both of those documents are extremely important to our community to keep it, you know, the way that, uh, our community would like to see that. So, uh, I feel like, uh, it was a lot of effort, a lot of work put in by a lot of staff, but it was nice to be a part of that process. And, you know, while maybe each of us have different opinions on some aspects of how the code came out or the general plan, uh, it was a consensus. And so it's something I think that our community should be proud of. You know, they're, they're very important documents, uh, just to protect our community, which is something important in, in Capitola. And I, I took the position pretty seriously. I started really, um, when I built my own house, and I went through some issues. Not that there's anything terribly negative to the way the city treated me, but we had issues and I, I saw the need that, um, I honestly believe that we need to, as commissioners, protect both the community. But, uh, those applicants to go through the process. And I know Chairman News, uh, Newman has said that, uh, about me, that he hasn't, I haven't seen a project that I didn't like. And well, there's maybe, uh, maybe that's not totally true. I don't know that it was really my job to like every applicant's, uh, you know, that came before us, what, what they were trying to, whether it's architecturally, design, color. But if it, if it fit within our zoning code and, uh, our general plan, I really believe that it's our role as planning commissioners and city staff to, uh, try to help these people achieve what, what they want for their own place. And so, um, I appreciate you putting up with me through some of these questions. I won't get into the coastal commission. I, I don't think they share the same perspective as, as we do of trying to appease and, uh, help our, uh, community, you know, have the place that they can prosper in and have their own property. So I'll leave it at that. All that to say that, uh, you guys, all the best. I appreciate your input and support on the process. And, uh, you guys have a great holiday, and I look forward to watching you next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So, um, this is the last meeting of this commission, this particular, uh, group of commissioners. Starting in January, we'll have a new planning commission, and there may be some carryover and there may be some changes. So, uh, I wanted to say farewell, basically, to this. farewell, basically, to this, uh, to this, uh, commission as a group, and, uh, I just wanna say that I think it was a very, uh, good year, and that the commission has worked together very, um, successfully to deal with, uh, what came before us, and, um, to come to consensus in most cases, and when we disagreed, we did so in a, in a professional and civil manner, and I think it was, it's a good example of how, of how a commission should function. So, those who are gonna be back next year, uh, which I may be one of, uh, we'll see what happens then, and those who are moving on, best of luck to you. Does anyone else have anything they would like to say before we close up the year? If not, we will adjourn the, oh, excuse me?
Our next meeting is January twenty-first. The, uh, City Council is adopting our planning commission schedule next week, so I'll be sending that out after adoption, but again, first Thursdays of each month, except for January, July, and August, it'll be the third Thursday. So, next meeting is January twenty-first.
All right, well, uh, again, farewell to everyone, and happy holidays, and we'll see some of you in January, and others whenever.
All right, good night.
You, thank you.
Good night.
Goodbye.